There was a vote, unanimous vote taken in executive session to deny grievance. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Rarick?
Volunteer Boys Lacrosse, John Mahino. Volunteer Boys Lacrosse, Pat Myers. Volunteer Softball Coach, Brianna Lepozza. Leave of Absence, Tiverton High School, Doug Walker. In the correspondence, you already approved it. Oh, you haven't gotten any?
No, that's another one. We're not, that was just for correspondence.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to move up item 7B, Spotlight on Success.
All those in favor? Okay.
Mrs. McKinnon is here and Mr. Landock. They can start us off to talk about.
We have a couple of students who are going to talk to us briefly about the youth activation in our program that we're running this Tuesday involving Fans in the Stands with our Unified Basketball Team.
One of the things that we were named Unified Basketball Team of the Week by, it's a Burger King Team of the Week. And our team went to the 92 Pro FM station and made a promo, and we've been on the radio, we've been on the radio starting yesterday. They've been doing commercials about Tiverton High School Unified Basketball. So this is our unified team. And he's got a little.
...are searching for the Burger King High School Team of the Week. Has your team accomplished something great on or off the field that you'd like to recognize? Nominate them now at LightRock105FM.com.
Hi, we're the Tiverton Unified Basketball Team, and we're this week's Burger King High School Team of the Week.
Yeah!
Hi, I'm Andrew Bogdan. We are one big happy family. We play great defense, and we shoot good three-pointers.
To hear the full story, log onto LightRock105FM.com. Powered by Burger King's 2-for-5 deals, now featuring the Big Fish Deluxe. The High School Team of the Week brought to you by Burger King, where taste is king, and Light Rock 105.
Congratulations.
92 Pro FM and the Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League are searching for the Burger King High School Team of the Week. What has your favorite team accomplished on or off the field that you'd like recognized? Anyone can nominate a team at 92ProFM.com.
Hi, we're the Tiverton Unified Basketball Team, and we're this week's Burger King High School Team of the Week. Yeah!
Hi, I'm Andrew Bogdan. We are one big happy family.
Next to Team of the Week at the top. Up to the top. Next of the week, hit that X.
Thank you.
My name's Grace Carrero. I'm Regan Burt, and we're the co-chairs of Youth Activation. And Youth Activation is to include kids with disabilities into the school more so there's not segregation, and to make sure they feel welcome in the school that they have to come to every single day. We work together with a big group to make sure that the kids that are downstairs feel welcome in the whole school. We sit with them at lunch, we talk to them about their day, and we basically just treat them as normal kids, because they are normal. They're different, yes, but they're extremely, they're just like us. So they should be treated as such.
One of the big ideas that we came up with to include them more was our Fans in the Stands game. It's April 15th at 7:00. We all know that Tiverton basketball games are a big deal, and everybody goes to them, they make a big deal, everybody's rowdy. So we decided to make a game against Portsmouth High School, our big rivals. And we ordered about 250 of these shirts that say Unified Starts With You, that one of our fellow Yak members, Alice Cotton, came up with. And we have a pep band coming to the game. We have, we have prizes that we're doing. We're doing a tiger ticket where we're handing tickets out, and if they come to the game with their name on the back of the ticket, they get entered in for a prize.
The point of the game is to show that everybody is the same, although we have differences. Every kid, Portsmouth and Tiverton, will be mixed in the crowd, so you can't tell who's from Portsmouth and who's from Tiverton, and they'll all be wearing that shirt. So that's the whole point of the, and then we'll watch a game, watch a unified game. So we invite all of you to please come and enjoy a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Unified Team also played at halftime, right, over at URI, the Ryan Center?
On the Ryan Center.
One of the girls' games, the state championship.
Yeah, us and Portsmouth were invited out of all the schools in the state to come and participate. One of the reasons why we were invited is because of the amount of work that they have done in our Tiverton Youth Activation, so.
Well, thank you, ladies, and that's another reason why this is the most amazing high school in the state, because we're all here together and we're all the same.
Thank you.
And when you write the word disability, the dis is this little, inability is this big.
Yep.
And that's what we all believe in, and it's wonderful that you're doing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
That's a great.
The person who was still hasn't arrived, if you can go to Diana.
I have just an update from our professional development day. It was the final day of our health curriculum work that's been going on for this past year, so it's been a long haul for them. And this is a follow-up to last year doing our physical education curriculum work. It was the same process. We had K through 12 teachers, so our entire health and PE staff were there, and we're very thankful for the local funding that we were able to get for this and the support of Mr. Rarick and the principals to accomplish this. Mr. McGuire had hoped to be here but was not able to be. He was very helpful with the scheduling and working with the consultants we hired for. The new curriculum allows us to better align to the state's standards and incorporate the most up-to-date research on health instruction and current health issues. It also provided time for teachers to look at online resources that are available for health. In addition, it was an opportunity for us to collaborate with the Tiverton Prevention Coalition. Mrs. Elbow came in and she was able to share some ideas and resources with our health teachers. And it also allowed us to strengthen our K through 12 articulation learning all the way from kindergarten up to high school, and provided time for teachers to collaborate and share effective practices and lessons. It's, we don't have time currently in the schedule for them to meet K through 12, so this was a good opportunity. And if you recall in our proposal for 2014-15 and the budget, we do have some additional collaboration time for them, so they can continue to work together. I have samples of the curriculum that I will just quickly pass along, and it has all been posted on our district website as well, so it was quite an accomplishment. And there's a binder for grades nine through 12, and grades five through eight, and K through four. Welcome to take a look through or to look through further on the website. So it was a year-long project, and we're very thankful that it was completed successfully, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's great work.
And it's also, again, it was a lot of hard work, as Diana mentioned, but it is also a requirement by RIDE that we district have PE health.
And by the health and wellness thing also, so when we meet, we'll be able to bring these and show everyone that we've done it, okay? At our next meeting, yes. Thank you.
But not with a cupcake.
No, not with a cupcake.
We'll have Jerry make us.
Can we just go to the facilities?
Yes. I make a motion to move up 6A Facility Study.
All those in favor?
At our last, Cindy's coming up, you've had some time to look through it. If you have any questions, Cindy's here tonight to answer any questions you may have. My goal is that after you have your questions answered, that at our next meeting, the committee officially establish a building committee. And then have those, gather the volunteers, and then have them go through the report further and prioritize for the committee as well as for the public, you know, what are some of the items that we need to be done? Even though it has been done for us, there are still some things that are, you know, considered priority, you know, and how we want to pay for them. So if you have any questions, Cindy's here and can answer or clarify anything you may have. And she's also here for the.
Yes. Oh, good, good. Well, I think it's very comprehensive, and as you said, once we get a building committee looking at it, and you've already done your, you've gone through it yourself.
And I just do have one question, Cindy, and we haven't been able to talk.
Sure.
And at each section, at the end of each recommendation, you know, like when you do each school, there's Priority One, and then what you call a second priority. How are those defined?
It's actually.
Not so much what they are in each one, but like what's a code one and a priority two?
So in the beginning of the report, it explains the priorities are the numbers one and two and three and four, and one is really something that should be happening within the next year, and those are usually life safety issues or major issues. And then the number two is things that should happen within the one to five years.
Okay, so when I see the breakdowns, we're just referencing back to the numbers?
Correct. And we had talked about it before. We can break these up. It's an Excel spreadsheet if you wanted to see it in certain orders or separate out things. That's not difficult to do.
Because when I, just roughly doing it, the numbers, if you look at just Priority Ones, and again, and I would have to verify with Cindy because we haven't had a chance to talk, it's a million and one, just to do the Priority One numbers. And then if you do the one and twos, it's 7.2 million. So it's somewhere, you know, you're looking at some serious, I mean, there are some within there that we can, and I have done that, we can pull out, you know, 5,000 here, you know, 1,000 there, but for Ryan's share, our items that we're going to need some help in when we get to that point.
Now, when we go through this process, and we get the building committee, and then we go through the council and everything, and the 40% reimbursement from the state, if that moratorium isn't lifted, is it then just health and safety issues still?
If the moratorium isn't lifted, it would be pretty much your one and twos that we listed.
One and twos that they would reimburse?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to mention as part of the process, it's a development. There's a Stage One, and the Stage Two further refines it. So it doesn't have to be that Stage One is the, what's decided in there is the end-all. You can change that. It's, I think, more important to get the process going and getting it before RIDE and getting their input as part of the process to make sure that we're on the right path for what you would like.
Certainly, but it does certainly provide a framework.
Yes.
You know, within those numbers.
Yes.
You know, an idea.
Definitely. It's a high-level looking.
So we went to a program by RIDE that looked at the state of the legislature of schools across the state, and RIDE has a formula based on, I guess, the action plan or report that each district reports, that comes up with another number, which was actually substantially higher than the estimates for the facilities study. Could you explain why there'd be a discrepancy? Because I think they were, it was something like 44 million is what they thought that the district.
For the district of Tiverton?
Support from RIDE.
I don't know. We'd have to talk to Joe DeSilva about that, what that entails.
He's the one that was there.
But their calculation was a, just like the square footage.
Yeah, it is. It was also based on, yeah, but I would think it was based on also the age of the school and square footage.
But they didn't have RIDE to not have anyone come down to see where, to come and look at the facilities.
Are there things that go into the protection?
Just information that they ask us.
Make it into cost. They do a survey each year, so we complete a report that says that, you know, the square footage, the value of buildings, maintenance modifications, and our annual maintenance and up to, maybe they model something based on that, so it really isn't specific to your district or how you maintain the buildings.
And also, I think it's a, it shows, I mean, obviously, the buildings are worn, they're tired, and there could be a lot more money and effort and work put into the buildings besides what we just listed as life safety.
That's what I was going to get at. What we have here primarily is safety, for health and safety.
Yeah.
You know, we're not talking about new walls, new things, ceilings and.
Right, and I thought it would be important to say, just to give you sort of a benchmark or an understanding, the Nathan Bishop School that was recently gutted and renovated, that was approximately, so they kept the building, but they renovated it totally, was approximately $235 a square foot. So if these schools are approximately 150,000, it's, you know, 30 million over each. And then if you do a new school, you're well over 300, not including the cost of the property. So I think that's important to note, that if you go through this effort and you get that bond, it's really, it's not a facelift, it's really important things that need to happen.
Right. But that's also important to understand is that it's not just.
Right.
We want to have a nicer-looking school.
Exactly.
Things that, you know, we decided on.
Yes.
When you look at them, I mean, some have to be done within the next year, no later than two years, right, the longest because of the nature of the deficiencies.
But it's not going to be an easy sell.
No.
So we have to understand that this is a priority that we're going to give that.
Right. Sure.
The only item that I had a question on specifically was, at the high school, it's noted that science classrooms should have emergency eyewash showers, and that would cost $90,000. Now, I know those science classrooms are relatively new.
I believe that's hot water.
And they have showers.
They have the eyewash, but they don't have the hot, if you read the whole, because I noticed.
So provide fixtures and dedicated hot water loops. So we have a shower, but it's a cold water shower only, and so to make it a hot shower, we need 90,000?
That's what they came up with as a budget number, yes.
Right, and so I was wondering, seeing as we just did them, that they would be sort of up to code.
With the last bond.
They would have the safety features we need.
When we built it, it was the code at the time.
2004.
We had nothing before that.
Right.
No showers at all.
We had none at all.
Oh, no, no. It was bad.
Whatever we put in was certainly an upgrade.
That's right.
It was also, but it was also the code at the time.
It just required a cold water shower?
We put in what the state required for us.
And now they require hot water in science classrooms?
I would say, personally, I would say that's not as critical as life safety issues.
Okay, because that's rated number one.
Then we can revisit something like that.
At first, I said, what do you mean, we have eyewash?
Right, that's what I said.
But then I read back and just talking about the hot water loop and.
With the last bond.
Maybe the hot water required.
That could be year five versus year one.
And so I think that's part of the reason why we need to sit down, even things that maybe are marked one or two, we may drop or move up.
That's what the building committee would do, you know, with Cindy.
Yes, okay, that's good.
You know, identifying those. But it is something that we can't wait on, because those who are at, there's a meeting with the budget committee, you know, they did want a copy of this, we sent it to them. And I know Mr. Perry, you know, once the budget's done, wants to meet with us, you know, just to go over, you know, to kind of touch base with him and the committee office. So they're well aware of the urgency as well, so the sooner we can identify those priorities and then meet with the budget committee, that will be, plus it'll also help us get our report on file with RIDE.
Right, that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good job. Anybody else have any questions?
On the facilities part.
Anybody else? No?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
I placed this, the cooling at the elementary schools on the agenda because it wasn't involved at our last meeting, so we placed it back on the agenda. The consideration.
And at this point, given the information you've received, do you have a recommendation?
I, my recommendation is that we have a significant number of issues that we have to deal with in the high school and the middle school. And I can't, the only thing I could see the committee considering possibly would be the ceiling fans as a possible option, but then the drawback in my mind to that is, what do we do for the high school and middle school? In other words, we've talked about, at least in theory, of it being an equalized response if possible, you know, that everybody has it addressed. You know, I don't know how you want to go. I mean, all's I'm looking at is, you know, 7.2 million dollars worth of health and safety issues that need to be addressed. And the air conditioning's not in that 7.2 million.
Well, the library's going to be a condition.
The library, yes.
What will be good?
You know, as far as anything else, that's not accounted for in the facility study for the high school and middle school.
No.
So whatever, bottom line is, whatever the committee would consider is over and above, you know, the 72.
And what is your recommendation in regard to the offer made by the Fort Barton PTO to supply window units?
I don't think they're going to be efficient. Did Cindy leave?
Yes.
I believe I asked her that question, and she said they just wouldn't be efficient. You could put them in, but you'd just be running, just be using electricity according to their experts, so.
And is that what has been the experience at Picassett where they've been running window units?
I've been in there, and there's a slight, it's not as hot, but still kind of warm. I mean, it's not noticeably cool, but that's just me.
And would you therefore recommend removing them from Picassett?
If the committee chooses not to do anything, then I think that's an option the committee would need to look at. In other words, in other words, we can't address the cooling at Fort Barton right now if the committee wants it to be equitable, which we've been talking about, but that would be something you should consider.
And what is your recommendation, though?
I would say probably to be fair that they would come out.
And would we put the fans in at Fort Barton?
The fans cost 38,000 per square, so it's 100 and 100-plus thousand. But that's passive, as they say, passive cooling. It does lower it by four to eight degrees, and then to pay for that, that would have to come out of our surplus, which assuming our budget passes, that will knock our half million down to 400,000. Would you want the ceiling fans? It's entirely up to the committee on those.
So I guess I see this as two different issues, related, but really two different issues. One is, we have cooling problems across the district that's going to cost us a substantial amount of money beyond what we have at our disposal. We'll just sort of discretionarily say, okay, we're going to go forward with cooling off everybody, and so that's something that plays into the larger consideration of the facility study and the long-term finances of the school system and the town and sort of the tax burden, and that's an enormous, complex problem that we're not going to solve here. The issue of the proposal from the PTO is related to that, but I think is something we need to separate out from that. And I think that they would be best served by coming to us with a very concrete proposal. We want to do X, Y, or Z with the money that we have at our disposal, and they're not here tonight, I don't think anybody from the Fort Barton PTO, and then we can either vote that up or down. I have a bit of a problem saying that to be equitable, we have to change what is essentially the status quo right now. There are some classrooms, and it's, I believe, not just at Picassett, but maybe at Fort Barton as well, or Ranger, are there any air-conditioned classrooms?
Just the self-contained special ed classrooms at Fort Barton.
Okay. But I guess I have a problem saying, you know, we're going to say, change the status quo as it exists right now to sort of make everybody equal in their misery, rather than say, you know, we have these air conditioners, why don't we just let them get used to mitigate whatever can be mitigated? I'm not sure I would say we have to go and take them out, so.
It's, if you allow any one, I would think you need to allow more.
If that was within our.
But it doesn't, but the status quo isn't good enough because the parents from Fort Barton are complaining about it. So they don't like the status quo.
Right. Absolutely.
So we would be maintaining the status quo, and they wouldn't be addressed other than to give us a proposal. I mean, I don't, it's up to the committee on that. If you guys want to do it, that's great.
I don't think the proposal was to remove air conditioning.
I thought they did make that recommendation.
Yes. Do you want to come, want to come up to the podium, please?
Not from Fort Barton. But I just, I know people at Fort Barton, and I've, honey, you know, you hear things on the side, and I think from, and again, if Fort Barton had someone here tonight, but I think they're asking for, let's try this. They know it's not a fix. They know that it's not going to bring the temperature in those rooms down by 20 degrees, but if it brought it down from 90 degrees to 85 degrees or 80 degrees, maybe that's better than 90 degrees. If they're willing to pay for it, and yes, the school department would need to pay the cost of electricity, you're, what, you're talking maybe the month of June and the month of September for how many days out of those weeks? It's not perfect, but we're not going to get to perfect probably anytime soon. And I don't know, after the last meeting, when Jerry came home and I was like, what, it seems like the communication and what they're thinking and what's getting discussed here seem very different. So, and I think they, it seems like they have different expectations, and they know that it's not going to be the fix, but I don't, I don't see what's wrong with trying if they're willing to pay.
Thank you. Yes?
Okay, Fort Barton's the only school that hasn't had my children. So I'm not a Fort Barton parent, but I am going to advocate for Picassett since Christine Giannini is not here or any of the PTO members. I believe if you go back and try and get the full story, it was after my time that I had left Picassett, but I believe that they did get approval from someone higher up than PTO, and they spent their own money to purchase these units. I'm not sure who installed them. Some were purchased, or I'm sorry, I installed them, and some were purchased because at the time we did have a large number of children in bed with conditions. Who need them.
That's correct.
And I believe even in the middle school, there are window air conditioners in our traditional classrooms, not just our special ed classrooms.
There's just for a couple of students.
Yes, who have issues that they can't sweat, and the units follow them, basically, which is, I think, what started the issue at Picassett, was that people had units and people didn't have units. So I'm just saying, because I'm going to tell you right now, that if you pull them out of Picassett, my vision says to me that they're going to make them, you pull them out of the main office, they're going to make, you pull them out of every office in every school, and it's going to be a huge can of worms.
They've already said that if we didn't put them in.
But no, but don't take them from the people that already bought them.
So I guess, you know, we don't really have a motion on the floor or.
No, not tonight.
Anything, really. But just to clarify my own view, I'm more than happy to entertain any proposal from any PTO about anything they would like to do with regard to cooling or heating or keeping things, you know, nice and breezy at any school with whatever funds they propose to bring to it.
Can I just?
I also oppose taking anything away from somebody who already has it in what I think would be a misguided attempt to impose, you know, equity of misery, I guess.
The high school does not have a PTO, so how would the high school get air conditioners? How would the middle school? How would the middle school get the air conditioners? So if the PTOs, and I disagree, if the PTOs have the money, that means they can purchase them for these schools. There had been a proposal, but we don't have such a mechanism for the high school and middle school.
I'm saying that I would be willing to entertain any proposal. I'm not saying I would vote it up or down. And I think that if the high school wanted to, if the high school parents wanted to form a PTO, I'm sure they're able to do that or allowed to do that. You know, I think we have to sort of listen to everybody and try and partner with anybody who's willing to help.
Anyone else? Have anything? No? Okay, so we'll just continue this again? Well, you said that someone would have to come forward with something.
Yeah, I think, I think right now, we don't, we don't have a motion, we don't have a proposal.
No.
I'm, as I said, I'm just trying to clarify my position, which is, I'm willing to listen to and vote on any proposal that comes before us. And I would oppose trying to take away anything that we already have.
Somebody already has. Yanni, anything? Okay. Mr. Fiore, anything? Since you'll be paying for it, we will through you. Thank you, I'm sure you will. Okay. Next, Mr. Rerrick?
Mentoring program, chief?
I thought, Diane, did you want to do something on the middle school? Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm Debbie O'Hara, the librarian at the Tiverton Middle School. And Lori and I just wanted to show you two things that we've been up to lately. One thing that we've been doing is the Skype with the Author Book Club. I don't know if you've heard about that.
Oh, yeah.
It's been in the newspapers.
That was wonderful.
And it's been very well received. It's a very popular program. You know, as luck would have it, the printer at home, and I don't have nice copies for all of you.
Some snippets of some of the things that happened this year.
So, I'm with 14. Last year, we had about 14 authors visiting our school. We think it's kind of, we have two different groups, one for fifth and sixth graders, another for sixth and eighth graders. That way we have the interest in reading levels matched up pretty evenly. Our next one, we're going to try something new, will be for students in grade six through eight. We'll see how that goes. I think it's going to be very successful. We also have, do you have any questions about this Skype with the Author Program? The PTC has given us money so we can buy the books now instead of borrowing them all from other libraries. So we have more books, so we can keep them in the hands of our students. Last year, our summer reading program was that, what was it anyway? John, there's my friend, Peter Johnson, with his book Houdini, The Amazing Adventures of John Smith Jr. We had a summer reading program, there was one off, one book a school. So we are one school, one book program. We had very successful, it was the best book signing program we've ever had at the Barnes and Noble in Dartmouth. We had more parents and students there. We were almost out the door, the light was wrapped around the building, around the inside of the building. It was the most successful ever. This year, we're going to have Diana Taylor-Lyle be our one author, one author, one school. We'll have Alfred L. Pickford, books for the fifth and sixth graders and the seventh and eighth graders, regarding the music, the flying rock, which is a historical fiction book that takes place with American citizens in our home area. This violinist, little Tom, I think she's coming to us as a favor to her friend, Kim Dunagan. So we're very, very lucky to have her. She's one, she's a Newberry Honor Award author, and as well as a Scott Odell Historical Fiction Award-winning author. See, we're going to have another book signing. The last two weeks of school, I expect it to be just as successful, if not more so, than last year. And then in the fall, she'll visit our school for a day, two assemblies, one for fifth and sixth graders, she'll talk about her books and answer questions, and then another for seventh and eighth graders. Last year, Peter Johnson stayed until the school closed because there were so many children interested in asking him more and more and more questions. It was really a great program. Any questions? Those are our ideas.
That's wonderful.
I want to thank you and all the teachers and administrators who support the library activities and for promoting reading and independent pleasure reading among students. So important.
Thank you very much. Around mentoring now?
Yes.
Mrs. Lassen, would you like to come up and speak about the STEAM Summit, please?
I'm ready to back. Usually catch me off guard. I'm just going to pass out the agenda, the speaker biographies, the students who attended the Innovation Marketplace, as well as the last page, which is the four STEAM goals for Rhode Island. So Thursday, April 3rd, we held a STEAM Summit. I was one of the members on the planning committee. It was very well-attended. We had over 110 people in attendance. We had an Innovation Marketplace. You can see the schools that were attended. Tiverton was there. They showed very well. They had their six-foot-tall Rude Goldberg gumball machine, their cutting boards, their manufacturing operation, their 3D modeling. Kohog Man was there. He was on the stone patio pavilion of the Pell Center
He greeted everyone.
To greet everyone, from the Commissioner of Education to the Rhode Island Manufacturers' Association to the students. So it was, it was a great opportunity for everyone to come out and kind of focus on STEAM education and policies and procedures that, going forth in the state, and what we can do and how we can all come together. The last page is the four goals of the STEAM Summit, and it would really be to hold an annual STEAM Summit. This was really the launch or the kickoff, so we plan to do this every year. Establish a STEAM office at Ride to direct curriculum and policy instruction, professional development. Set Rhode Island STEAM goals and policies throughout the state. This is K through 12. This isn't just high school STEAM initiative. And establish a STEAM Advisory Council. This Advisory Council would be made up of educators, legislators, as well as business and industry people, and it would report directly to the governor's office. So those are pretty, some pretty ambitious goals, but it's certainly something that's attainable. And we hope to work and have some roundtable discussions and so forth. So we'll keep you informed of what goes on from here. If you want to get involved, please let me know. We'll be having some roundtable discussions, and we'll be attending a conference at Rhode Island College on May 30th, which will be a follow-up to the, to the launch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the Newport County Mentor, as you know, we've been going every month on Fridays for the past four or five years, and not much has come of it, but finally something is starting to come. And that's what we said, you have to work hard at these things, get everyone together, get everyone to the table. And we finally had our first kickoff. And when Commissioner Guest was leaving, after she spoke, I chased her out the door and said, you have to say goodnight to Kohog Man. And she did. She was like, really taken back with that. I said, this is what we're trying to do. I said, this is like, when I went into that classroom to meet Kohog Man when he was finished, the students that made it said to me, Mrs. Black, how can we measure that on a test? And I said, we can't measure that on a test. And that's all working together, to have multiple measures. And not to have one thing say whether you've done well or been successful, and that's what it's, that's what it's all about at Tiverton High School. So I was really excited in all, all the grades, you know, K through, K through 12. So I think this is great, and we'll be, we'll be talking to the governor, people running for governor. I called them, and I said to one of them, you know, are you going to come to the STEAM Summit? And they said, well, who's going to be there, and this and that? And I said, well, these people are going to be there. And then I called back, and someone else answered the phone, and I asked for the person, and they said, no, this isn't him, this is phone. I said, I'm talking to a phone. I said, no, this is really important. You people talk about the skills gap, and the students aren't ready for your jobs. We're trying to get everyone together so that you can tell us what you need, and we certainly can give it to you because we have amazing students. But when something like this happens, you have to come, and you have to be part of it. Don't just give speeches here and there and then go back home. So we've got to get everybody on board with us. And the Lieutenant Governor in Massachusetts heads all this up, and that would be our hope, that it would be at the Lieutenant Governor's office. And our other hope is that it's at all public schools, within the public schools, not fragmented out to this, in this Innovation Academy and that one over there. It's for all our kids to participate in, so that's one of our goals. Thank you. Okay, now the lovely budget?
Yes, just, I put this item on because we didn't know what the Budget Committee was going to do at their meeting last Thursday. Please report that they approved our request, and our request will be put forward to the voters at the FTR. So good news, we didn't need to use this item tonight.
And the last day for an alternate budget is the 22nd of April, for someone to put out an alternate budget. And if that happens, we'll let everyone be aware, so we can go out and support the Budget Committee's budget, which will be the Town Council, the School Committee, and them. It was really a thoughtful process on everyone's part. The Town Council worked very hard getting it down, so did we, and it's very sensible. And if someone comes with another budget, we'll just say it's just never enough. That's ridiculous. That's just what we'll have to say. Right, Mr. Rerrick?
Maybe they'll come up with a budget that gives us more money.
Maybe zero. Okay.
And again, it was just a really good process. You know, we've talked about it before, but the Budget Committee was, we've been working with them since the fall, so I'm glad to see, you know, it's the lowest we've ever been at, and, you know, hopefully we can achieve it again. But, you know, I think it's a very, it's a watershed year for our
And thank you to Mr. Rerrick and Mr. Fiore for working so hard on those numbers constantly. And also, this was the first year, we started in October. Usually we start in January, but we even had a pre-budget hearing to all sit down together, and I think that helped. The policies, is this just the first reading?
Yes.
It is.
Just, they've been posted for anybody to comment on.
Could you please just mention them so people will know?
Right, describe the individual.
The first policy is policy number 481. It's entitled Extracurricular Policies. This policy is new. It essentially establishes, the School Committee is the body that approves any extracurricular activity, whether it be interscholastic, league-oriented, or just a club. It's something that we've known, but we had never had in writing, so we were clarifying it for that purpose. Also, teachers are not allowed to, I want to make sure I got the right one, I'm sorry, it's from the other policy. This also focuses on, again, it's a state law, but we wanted to put it in policy that there's no pay-to-play fee, shall be charged for any activity for our students. So if we offer an activity, you know, students are not, you can't charge them to play basketball or participate in the drama club and things of that nature. The next policy is
Question, Paul, before we leave, I just have two comments on that. One's somewhat trivial, the other, I think, is something we should really consider. In that paragraph about no pay-to-play, I think pay-to-play is a bit of a colloquialism, and if we're writing policy, we should probably be a little bit more standard. And I would say no fee shall be charged to students, period. You know, just sort of make it a flat. That's my trivial comment. The more substantial one that I think we should consider is when they, is about the Suggested donations may be requested but must be followed by the statement. However, donations are not required to participate in this activity. I think it's important to still send the message that the, you know, it's not, the funding is not coming from thin air, however. And so I would want to add something along the lines of, you know, that, I mean, that funding is needed, but donations are not required. And really got quite the wording that I would want to use, but I think that it's important to send the message that we still need to fund the program. I wonder if anybody else has any other thoughts about that, or?
Me, that's why we have it up.
We did discuss the language for a while, and we didn't want to, we didn't want anybody to get the impression that they were being strong-armed. So we didn't want something like, donations are not required, but if we don't collect enough money, we're canceling the activity. Because people feel that they're being strong-armed when you use that language. So it's, it's a very delicate balance. I mean, I understand your point of view, that donations are necessary, you know, this, I mean, we can work on it. Perhaps something like, this, this activity is funded solely through donations, however, donations are not required for participation.
So I guess I did have the wording, it kind of flew through my head as I was speaking. So what I would propose is that, you know, take out the whoever, however, and say, this program is supported by donations, semicolon, donations are not required for participation in this activity. That sends very straightforwardly the two points. One is, it's not coming out of thin air, but it's not a requirement that you pay to participate in this program.
Jerry, what's, I'm sorry, what's the second part? Should we, you want to say these programs or this?
So, so in the
Delete the however.
So delete the however. Start with, this program is supported by donations, semicolon, donations are not required for participation in this activity, full stop. I think that's the least coercive, least pejorative way that we can basically just tell people the truth. It's absolute transparency.
You need to make, if that's the wish of the committee, is to make the motion.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Okay.
We can make it, put it up.
Any other questions about that motion, that amendment?
Carol, did you get that since you're
I do, although I'm, I'm finding it hard to give up, however, this program, because without it, we got it, it's a little chat. This program is supported by donations, donations are not required for participation. I'm looking for a little transition here.
As a writing teacher, we always stress transitions. I'm looking, Diane, do you have a transitional word or phrase to suggest?
However, does kind of bring the two parts together.
However, I find however somewhat meaningless word. I'll give you a however for
Give her the however because she worked hard on this.
All right.
She's our editor-in-chief.
Do you have enough money for that mini-balls?
Can I just ask clarification, and this is still not putting any indication of what the cost per pupil to attend this activity is?
That's a good point.
Been a lot of discussion.
Well, the suggested donations may be requested, so you could have on it
You can say suggested donation is $10.
Donation is $10. But you also have to have on it
A disclaimer.
All right.
Because you don't have to.
Yeah, so I think that, I think that's a very good point, and probably something that's very important, is that, you know, if you say, if we say this, then, you know, Mr. Rerrick is going to send in $100.
I don't know, I want to send $2.
Black, you're only sending $2.
It's the other way around. I'll send the two, she's got the hundred.
People really, people do really need guidance, because they want to be responsible.
And this policy allows that. We did discuss that, and that's why we said suggested donations may
Are allowed.
Yeah, maybe, you can say suggested donations
And whatever the number is.
Right, or $5 or whatever.
We didn't put a number because
Because it depends on the event.
Is the suggestion amount may be requested?
Okay.
Yes?
I just wanted to say that we did try it, and I sat in on a few of the subcommittee meetings, and we ran a after-school program and did not put up a suggested donation, and we ended up And we ended up needing to increase the size, which is, again, another issue with the policy. But increasing the size of our session and then not having enough money because we collected maybe a third, a third of what the cost was. Again, someone sending in $30 for a program that costs $16 and then other people not sending anything. So, and I think we finally came to the conclusion that we could do suggested donation and I think that that's all we need and I think most people do want to donate, but they need, I got so many emails asking me how much to donate. You know, people want that number.
Okay. Thank you.
So what, what's-
Oh, you got it now?
Are you giving me my however?
I'm giving you the however. That's my motion.
No, second however.
Thank you.
So do we have it?
So do you want the motion to include elimination of pay-to-play and the change from suggested donations to a suggested donation amount and then the-
That pay-to-play is actually a thing they vote on at the State House, they call it that.
Well-
I mean-
State House is not my model for it.
Well, I'm just saying, in Massachusetts, in Massachusetts, it's an official pay-to-play, it's a program, so.
Education is.
Really? Okay.
You're going to trade me that for the however?
Pay-to-play is back in. How about if we put it in quotes?
I mean, people know what that means and they'd say, yes.
Okay.
Suggested donations.
Is it clear that, that, I think it was somewhere, I don't have it written in, but is it clear that we're also talking about after-school programs?
Yes, we-
Pay-to-play-
Pay-to-play?
Yes.
It doesn't mean-
Right, and-
Pay-to-play is for the extracurricular activities.
And that's why we added the sentence, this includes both athletic and non-athletic activities.
Okay. Do we have it now?
Do you want to read it back?
So that paragraph, I'll read the entire paragraph. In accordance with Rhode Island state law, no pay-to-play, quotation marks, fee shall be charged to students for participation in Tiverton School Department extracurricular activities, including materials or equipment related to the activity. This includes both athletic and non-athletic activities. A suggested donation amount may be requested, but must be followed by the statement, colon, this program is supported by donations, semicolon, however, comma, donations are not required for participation in this activity, period.
Any closer to perfection.
Isn't that lovely? Okay, that's a motion? Okay, you all in favor?
Okay, next policy. One down. Policy 1021, it's entitled Parent Organization, and we wanted to be clear, includes PTOs, so we put it in the title. This policy states organizations, among other things, must be for a public nonprofit purpose. Private enurement is not allowed and that is when, private enurement occurs when the members of member families are sole beneficiaries of an activity. Organizations must maintain their own cash accounts outside of the school accounts. Parent organization funds should not be commingled with student body or district funds. There's also an application form that will be needed, that needs to be done once a year. It's called a group registration form, you know, that needs to be submitted. And also, a fundraising activity form must be submitted and these are part of the policy, need to be submitted annually. And I think that's the highlights, Carol, that I mean, I mean, those are just the one site.
Yep.
Okay, with that one, that'd be welcome.
The next one, 1022, gets deleted, will be deleted, replaced by 1021. 1231 is entitled Fundraising, Sales and Solicitation. We've already talked about the fundraising activity request form that needs to be filled out. No school-sponsored group shall participate in fundraising that consists, and again, this is a term that we came up with, if we want to change it, of panhandling, in our example, i.e. shaking the can. All proceeds from fundraising activities will be used to further educational goals or to sponsor school-related activities. A facilities use form must be filled out by the group if they need use of the building. That's pretty much it for 1231.
And the yearly report submitted by June 30th.
Yeah. It's 1231. I do want to, and not because I'm on the committee, but Carol and Deb and our parents that came, put a lot of time in trying to get these things crafted, so it wasn't an easy process, but we got there.
And it is, it's a lot of work, but I just want to also say that we welcome help, we welcome public-private partnerships, we're going to need those more than ever. So we don't want to be too restrictive, like as we know in business and in sometimes to get permits in the town, they go so far overboard that you can't do anything. So that's what I want to be careful of as we do this and form this and especially tell the community that we really want to work with you and if you have any questions about this or concerns, because it is very difficult to meet these. So we don't want everyone to know we're welcoming to you to try to work with us. Okay, thank you.
The next item would be Senior Project Early Release. Peter here, Steve?
No, he's not here. The Senior Project, the Senior Project is going to be held on May 21st this year. The Senior Project is one of the three major graduation requirements for public high school seniors to attain their senior. The judgment takes place that day and Mr. Forrest would normally come and request that we have a half-day dismissal to grades nine to 11 so that we can hear the judges from the community and also essentially listen to the presentations for two hour block from 12th to 21st.
And this is something that we've done since we started.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request for Senior Project Early Release.
Any questions?
And just for those at home who do watch, if you're interested in volunteering, just call up high school, ask to speak to Pete Forrest, send him an email.
Did that email come from the, there was an email for requesting judges?
That was, no, it was high school. It should have been high school.
Just before I send it off, but all-
We send it to everybody. Anyone can be a judge. It doesn't-
Unless your child is a senior, I believe.
Right. Of course, you can't sit on your child's.
Now, now if, now if, if a child failed the Senior Project and then they appealed it to the school committee, is that how it would be?
No.
There's no appeal?
There's steps to go through for a-
But then at the end, would it, could it possibly come to us?
It could.
Then I'd wonder if we should be a judge, that's all I'm saying.
You can be a judge as long as you don't judge that you'd have to recuse it.
But what if we didn't know it was going to fail?
No, but if Mary Smith came forward and you happened to catch Mary Smith's presentation,
we've never had one.
I know, but I think it could possibly come to us.
But failing that is the equivalent of, in my mind, it's like failing 12th grade English.
I know.
You'd appeal it, but you didn't pass, I mean.
Okay, just want to be careful.
You can always appeal.
Don't want any conflicts of interest, you know. Okay.
And the last item is food service contracts.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes, included in the school committee's package was the executive summary of the formal book that Chart Wells has made and as I had mentioned by last meeting, they were sold better for the, our food services contract. And what I'm asking for this evening is for the committee to formally award the contract to Chart Wells. We're in the process of getting that contract negotiated with Dwyer. Dwyer has to approve all of our food service contracts with vendors. So once we get that back, I anticipate a similar situation. We'll have five one-year contracts that we will get at the discretion of the school committee and that should be one and bring in form. This was the entire bid package, I didn't make copy of it, but I, in copying the executive summary, it has most of the relevant information that I think we would need to make a decision. And as I mentioned last time, I think the biggest highlight from a financial perspective is they now guarantee they're not going to lose any money. Before, we had a guarantee, it was to the extent of our management fee, which was about $10,000. So this year, which is probably our worst year ever with lunch program, we're going to significantly exceed that. And part of the reason is we lost a lot of our sales to Atlantis Charter School, who decided to go do their own food service program this year. So we will have protection for the situation like that, but we have a bad year financially, at least three to five years of this contract I self-made on us. That was probably the most significant change. They've had, they're proposing some capital addition, equipment purchases for us and they've summarized the whole region. As I mentioned last time, we're in with Portsmouth, Little Compton, Middletown, Bristol Warren and Barrington. So it's all very transparent on who's getting what as far as their capital allowance and what the fees are for everyone. They've made significant changes to our fees because we're no longer selling to Atlantis Charter, so they've adjusted our fees down, which makes, which they think it can be profitable once again for us. I'm recommending we award the contract, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If I don't have any answers now, I can certainly get them from Chart Wells. But we've been partners with them now for 10 years and by and large, we're very happy with what we've received from them.
Now, one question I did have was the à la carte. That's the extra items, right, that they've been asking for?
Yeah, what's happened, Rhode Island has very stringent food nutrition requirements, actually more strict than the national requirements and that put Rhode Island at disadvantage. A lot of the national manufacturers weren't accommodating Rhode Island. So now what's happened, as the national standards have kind of caught up to Rhode Island, a lot of the Frito-Lay and Pepsi and the large manufacturers have now, are now generating products that we can now use here and that's allowed Chart Wells to kind of roll out the à la carte portion of their menu. And those are basically add-ons and snacks that they couldn't sell previously. So they're hoping that that would make them more profitable again by being able to sell those add-ons.
But that has nothing to do with the price of the food, they're not going to go up this year, right?
No, I mentioned that part of this contract is we're going to keep prices level, we're not going to have an increase at least the first year and see how that goes, but that's a commitment that we did get from Chart Wells.
Oh, that's good. And we've worked well with them with the health and wellness. They come to our meetings and they-
They've been practicing in a lot of different aspects of the school department.
They've been excellent.
We've considered this well.
Yeah. And the farm to farm fresh food and everything.
The five bullets they highlight is the financial guarantee, increase student participation is one of their goals, energize nutrition and wellness, commitment to the low produce farm to school program and deploying new technology and mostly cash year line and accounting financially for the students' training actions.
So you recommend?
Yeah, we award the contract.
So do I have a motion?
Make a motion to award our food services contract to Chart Wells.
Do I have any questions from anyone? No? Okay. All those in favor? Tell them welcome back and we'll be having a meeting soon, tell them, they'll be thrilled to hear that.
Thank you very much.
And I know Kelly will be there at our meeting. Okay. Anything else? Any announcements? Yes? Mr. Fazette?
Since we had received our accreditation, this is back in March 2012, received accreditation for the high school over the next 10 years, we have submitted the first special report to the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and the committee, the NES Committee actually commended the district and the high school and a lot of it had to do with facilities, structural improvements with the auditorium, fire alarm system, school security and replacement of the wastewater treatment plant. I also acknowledge the generosity of the technology contributions with the Tiverton Power Company, the allocation of funds to equip two new computer labs and also the reestablishment of professional development opportunities for teachers. So we have work to do because it will be a two-year report due already next November. But that's the first initial report and the accreditation status is continued.
Thank you. Mrs. Waddell, our Blue Ribbon application is on its way to Washington.
It is, it is. We sent it off and we're waiting to see what happens with the first round, so.
Could you tell them how many pages it was? It was unbelievable.
It was, ended up being 44 pages.
It was amazing. What a wonderful job you did, thank you.
And could you describe the process? You said there's a first round, so how many rounds are there all in all?
What happens is we, we were selected, we were preschool selected and then we submitted our application and we are in the first round, which is the screening round. And from that first round, it goes through the middle of May. So I guess the team of screeners are looking through our applications and by the middle of May, individuals supposed to be contacted to fix any errors with any data entries or any of the questions because we had to submit, there were 14 different essays that we had to do on top of data analysis. So if they had any clarifications, any questions, they'll ask us if they want to interview, you know, me about any of the content of anything, they'll also do that. Then it goes to another round and then the final award will be made. The Secretary, the U.S. Secretary of Education, Ari Duncan, will be announcing the award winners in September. And the winners will be going to Washington in November for the ceremony. So hopefully-
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
And could you please, and could you please tell us about the April Friends Day? That was so wonderful at the middle school.
We had Kohog Man and we had the anti-bullying big bear. And the kids and the adults, I had bracelets all over my arm, even though we had a run to a workshop in Providence afterwards. And the high school kiddos came down and did a wonderful program for our students at lunch, mentoring them and it was just really a lot of fun. We played music, all friendship-focused music between classes. And throughout the day, different homerooms had different colors and everyone was encouraged to swap bracelets and it was chaotic, but it was fun chaos as kids were reaching across grade levels. It was really a lot of fun. You saw it in morning, the children came in, our beautiful children from little kiddos from Middletown who came in and hugging that bear.
The bear was at the door greeting everyone, anti-bully bear. And the kids were hugging him and it was so sweet. It was a wonderful day.
And then at the end of the day, one of our kiddos who, you know, always communicating, actually yelled out, "Big bear." And so we brought her, you know, to the cafeteria, said, "The big bear." Her teachers were amazed, they didn't believe that there was a big bear. She's saying, "Big bear." And I said, "Sally Black, why the big bear?" It was big, about five feet high or so.
Oh, it is, yeah. It's taller than me, which isn't, I'm really not. I'm on the downswing.
I thank you for the sparkly sweater you let me wear, I was in my white outfit, you know, my workshop.
She was all dressed for her very, very lovely, you know, professional. And I said, "Well, you said you dressed, you know, fancy today and sparkly, you don't look sparkly." So I took off my gold chow and I gave it to her and she looked beautiful. And then we took a picture with the bear with it on, I could see when he looked gone.
That's quite an eye. Did you get the shawl?
It was a beautiful day.
I wore the shawl and it was a lot of fun. It was our first Friends Day and it was, it was a rip. We thanked the high school kids for coming down and Pierre Mettors, it was wonderful with our little ones.
And one last thing, the banner that you see in front of you was donated by Barbara Pelletier, so if we could send her a thank you letter. She made that for us and we have, of course, the tiger around there and the little fox, she did that. Really is very nice. We have to thank her for that.
I do have one last announcement. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, I won't be here. It's our vacation.
It's during vacation?
Yeah. We poorly planned on my part.
So what would you think we should do?
Not the vacation.
Oh, Dr. Waters is not going to be here either. What do you think?
I think we can go to our May meeting. I don't have anything pressing right now. I regularly scheduled a meeting in May.
Unless something came up, then we could, okay.
We have our home unified basketball game a week from Thursday, so we will be sending on you-
Little reminders?
Invitations. We have a huge team.
Huge team, you met many of our children.
Yes. And I'll bring the fox.
Bring the fox, I'll bring my fox too.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.